I'm gonna call the October 8th meeting of the Escaminut Planning Commission order. If you'll stand and salute the flag with me. Okay, can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Wyler?
Here.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Do we have Commissioner Roman, or Romo, excuse me, absent today? Do we have Commissioner Span?
Here.
Commissioner McNair?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
And Commissioner Watson?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
We'll move to approve the minutes of September 24th, second.
Okay, can we have a vote on that? Do it all in the paper. Six yes. Okay, written communication.
Thank you Chair, there is one correspondence submitted on the dais for each commissioner related to the only item on tonight's agenda, that's current business item each one. This is correspondence that speaks to the design context of, which is under the purgative discussion this evening.
Thank you, and any future neighborhood meetings?
Yes, the city council formed community advisory groups, which are to tackle five various topics of interest to the community. The first meeting will be held on October 14th, so almost a week ago from yesterday. And that topic area is gonna be an environmental focus, but the groups will be convening all within about a week or two period, and then setting forth the agenda and schedule thereafter. So if anyone's interested in participating on a voluntary matter and contributing, they're more than welcome to.
Will that be in here or in the Mitchell room?
It's in the Mitchell room.
Okay, oral communications, does anybody in the audience wish to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we have no public hearings, current business, H1, design review, SUB-18-0011.
Thank you Chair, good evening Commissioners, my assistant is the planning director. This item is a design review for a project that's currently in the process. The discussion tonight is intended to provide early guidance on design-related matters of the subject application. What this is intended to discuss is to have the open communication to that indirectly who is here this evening. Staff is gonna take more of a backseat role this evening after the initial presentation. City staff is also gonna provide, have a neutral presentation and objectively present the matter of the subject application, not necessarily through this correspondence sent by the city staff to the applicant. So again, this is not prejudicing the commission's opportunity to really dig in and talk directly to the applicant and express support or opposition to different related matters. The discussion tonight will not prejudice the commission or commit the commission to taking certain action that will be considered later in the review and consideration of the project. Ultimately, the project will be forwarded to the planning permission review, this public hearing to review and actually recommend approval to the projects to the city council. So again, this stressing that this is just a preliminary and kind of a precautionary review of the project with respect to the design context. So this particular project is for the review of the redevelopment of the former Palmer Health Downtown Campus. The project proposes an amendment to the downtown specific plan in three areas. Currently, there is a requirement for Grand Four retail or commercial in this particular sub-district. This particular amendment, portion of the amendment, would amend the downtown specific plan to allow this to have its own Grand Four. The project proposes revisions to parking requirements, in particular the guest parking ratio rate. The parking has provided provisions which will cover the presentation, provides approximately 22 spaces per multifamily unit for guest parking, which is less than typical 25, so quarter space parking rate. And the last component, it's related to the proposed mixed-use tower taller than that at the southwest corner of the main campus site. The proposed high limit of that tower would be 90 feet tall, and the current specific plan allows us up to 75 feet. The project also includes a tentative subdivision map to depict individual lots for ownership, common ownership lots, public streets, power generators, and structural improvements. There's also a development agreement, which would include a transfer of density from the main campus site to the senior apartment site, which is across Valley Boulevard. And this transfer would be recorded as a density transfer program. So currently, one portion of the development site allows up to 100, and this correct or the other site allows up to 75. The other proposed component of the project entitlements includes a general plan amendment that is to modify the circulation on roadway classification, and that will also be covered later in this presentation. The project purpos proposes 510 total residential units, 90 senior apartments, 258 apartments, 72 villas, and 90 row homes. There's approximately 1,200 square feet of commercial proposed in two locations, which could accommodate cafe, workspaces, restaurant, leasing space, or gym. There is a total of 177,000 square feet of open space, that's broken down into private open space, which is about 43,000. Usable open space, 56,000, and passive open space, 77,000. And again, that will be something I cover later in this presentation. The 13-point acre project site is the former hospital campus downtown. It's currently developed with 398,000 square feet of hospital and medical office and commercial uses. Existing site also includes 1,037 parking spaces. Existing hospital campus is comprised of three areas, the main hospital building to the east of Valley Boulevard, medical offices and commercial to the west of Valley Boulevard, and medical offices along Fig Street. The main hospital building includes ninth story McCloud Tower, the west tower, which is the hospital operations building, over a four-story parking structure, an adjacent seven-story parking structure, co-generation plant, and three trailers. Access to the main hospital building is currently provided from Hickory Street, East Valley Parkway, Valley Boulevard intersection, with secondary access points up Pennsylvania Avenue and East Grand. Surface parking wraps the south and east and north sides of the building. The buildings located on the west side of Valley Boulevard include a mail office building and a vacant commercial building. The mail office building is 12,000 square feet and three stories tall, and the vacant commercial building is 4,000 square foot, single-story structure. The site area immediately to the east of the hospital includes five medical office buildings, all those buildings are one to two stories tall. So for the focus of tonight's discussion and ensuing presentation, looking at various components of the site, site layout, this is building orientation, site design, access and circulation, so it include the layout of parking areas and drivable areas and access to the public right-of-way, grading, any combination of fencing or retaining walls, the setbacks proposed, various degrees of architecture, landscaping, any other outdoor facilities and recreational amenities, or other physical elements provided in the plan. Residential uses would be comprised of four multifamily residential unit types. The senior apartments would be situated within one five-story building in the western portion of the project site to the west of Valley Boulevard, shown on the screen as the brown, dark brown building. A total of 90 units would be provided in that building. Apartments are proposed on the east of Valley Boulevard, the 19 Valley Boulevard, East Valley Parkway, and East Grand Avenue. A total of 250 apartments, the eight apartments will be provided along three buildings. Villas would be located east of the apartments within the central area of the site, a total of 90 villas will be provided in nine buildings, and that's shown in the yellow. Row homes would be located on the southern-east portion of the site, with coverage along East Grand Avenue and North Fig Street. Row homes would provide 70 dwelling units within 11 three-story buildings. The commercial areas are shown on this slide in red and blue. The commercial space proposed within the southern area of the senior apartment building, as well as the southern side of the apartment building proposed, adjacent to the center section. Landscaping, a total of 1.6 acres of landscaping is proposed throughout the site. Streetscape trees would be incorporated along the Valley Boulevard, Eastern Avenue, and East Valley Parkway. Finding landscape at the corner of the North Paper Street and East Valley Parkway and Valley Boulevard would demarcate the areas of the main project entrances. All proposed landscaping would be drawn toward. Recreation and landscaping, open space, the project includes recreational open space amenities as part of proposed uses. The usable recreational open space amenities, 54,000 square feet throughout the site, are the major features, including a dog park located on northern portion of the site, which is adjacent to the Pennsylvania bend on the south side of the site, on Slide 24. And then also, the project site may essentially locate a pool and spa and community pavilion, and that is shown on this slide. Additional passive open space of 77,000 square feet, square feet would be provided in walkways, trails and courtiers, in addition to the private open space in terms of outings. The project would provide approximately 347 square feet of open space per residential unit as calculated. Various cross-sections have been provided in the grading plan that was provided to the planning commission. And this slide represents the cross-section along Valley. Armored vehicle access and pedestrian access would be provided throughout the project site at intersection of East Valley Parkway and North Hickory Street and Valley Boulevard. This entrance would include signage and landscaping to demarcate the main entrance. Other vehicle and pedestrian access points would be provided on East Grand Avenue and the public alley of west of Valley Boulevard. Valley Boulevard and North Fig Street would provide pedestrian access to the project site. As mentioned earlier, North Fig Street is locally classified, roadway classification is proposed to be de-graded, but not to disrupt the overall volume capacity carrying within that section. Classification is consistent with that, so. The apartments are proposed on East Valley Boulevard, running Valley Boulevard, East Valley Parkway, and Red Avenue. A total of 250 apartments would be provided within three buildings. The proposed buildings would be in five levels, with four floors and a basement. Apartment three units would include one, two, and three bedroom units, very equal size, from 1,104 square feet to one-bedroom units, with lost 1,333 square feet, two-bedroom units to 1,600, and 46 square feet, three-bedroom units. The project site would have a unified modern architectural style, this subset of styles for each area of the site. The proposed structures would range from one to five stories, ranging from 36 feet to 75 feet, plus a 90-foot mixed-use tower, which is shown on the bottom of this slide to the left of this room, and on this grid to the right. The color scheme would include varying shades of red, off-white, and tan. Surfaces would be primary, step-by-step, passing, combined, curved, being metal, black, and yellow, stone, and near varying types of wood to provide visual interest. Senior apartments would be situated within one five-story building in the western portion of the project site of West Valley Boulevard. A total of 90 units would be provided in the building consisting of 600 square foot studios, 700 square foot one-bedroom units, and 800 square foot two-bedrooms. Again, the material schedule is very similar, but tailored to each individual sub-area. The row homes would be located in the southern-eastern area of the site, with coverage along East Grand Avenue and North Fig Street. Row homes would provide 70 dwelling units within 11 three-story buildings. Two-bedroom rows would be 1,495 square feet, three-bedroom units would be 1,415 square feet to 1,800 square feet. Villas would be located east of the apartments within the central area of the site. A total of 90 villas would be provided within nine buildings, including two and three-bedroom units. Two-bedrooms villas would be 1,104 square feet, three-bedrooms would be 1,400 square feet, and three-bedrooms would be 1,646 square feet. Villas would include garages on the ground floor. So this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any additional questions, but earlier we would be hearing directly from the commission about the design review that all of this is on this slide. We'll be taking notes as appropriate and sharing ASMRs to the applicant at this meeting. The applicant and the project team is here this evening, so it's a good opportunity to ask any design-related aspects to the project, things that are related to density and CEQA specifically outside of the design review. We can have a very general, basic conversation about it, but really those comments should be reserved for project events to the commissions without knowing the steering for final action. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions of staff?
The tower element, the 90-foot tower element, what's in that area that's above what is normally the usable area for a residence? Is that just open, is that just an architectural feature, or is that actually used to wear?
This is a question I've been getting for the applicant, but it's my understanding that the area of this 75-foot element is usable commercial space, and it could be used for any of the items or activities that we'll previously discuss.
And then, you know, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about various issues on the site plan itself, I've just got a question about site distance, right at the entrance off Valley Parkway. Just noticed on the map that the site distance lines kinda cut right through the retaining wall, and it looked like the rest of the site distance. So I wasn't sure if I was reading that right, or if I was.
You are reading that right, that is shown on the plans over to you. This is a project that is still going through city review, so I'm very likely to find things that may not be internally consistent with the plan itself, or are still going into revision potentially, but that is something that staff has already flagged, but has not delivered as an official comment to the applicants. The applicants are due a comment letter, I think, within the next week or so. So what is generated from tonight's discussion and other conversations that have been had of staff will be returned to the applicant.
So staff has taken a look at this, made some comments, provided that back to the applicant, and applicant has responded. Has there only been one iteration of that?
The first seminal.
I'm sure there's been discussions over that.
Yes, there's been prior intake, certainly there has been ongoing conversations. The formal seminal came in just at the end of last calendar year, and I believe that that application was not completed during its first intake. The second seminal was more complete in terms of the material content required to have a comprehensive overview of the project. And so what is being presented to the commission is essentially the third seminal to point the second comprehensive, complete seminal. So typically with projects of this size, it's not unusual to have multiple iterations of city review. One of the advantages of having design review before the commission is if there is a significant project that has a lot of community interest or city interest, and maybe they'll get it right, that the commission has an opportunity to be brought in early to kind of provide some of their early guidance. So certainly if there's things that you see, now will be referred to our review by them, but it doesn't necessarily exhaust what the city might provide in the comment letter, because there are things that are going through the planning review, or also the full apartments, including engineering for the service and sufficient.
One other question, Valley Boulevard, is that gonna be changed to a one-way?
Correct. During the presentation, I was selectively cutting down on the narrative that I was providing, but yeah, so this is a cross-section of what is proposed, so currently there is both northbound and southbound travelings. This would eliminate the southbound, so it'll all be northbound travel from that Grand Avenue intersection to the north, in order to accommodate expanded parkways, sidewalk, parking, and upper space for bicyclists. So this is kind of repurposing the complete streets concept and finding ways to integrate new things into the public space, it's currently not being done.
And so the curb-to-curb width is gonna stay what it is today, we're just changing essentially the striking?
I believe it's 104 feet today, remaining.
Yeah, it gets realigned too, it gets pulled, and so that right now there's kind of a jog in the intersection, and so it realigns, I think we end up with 54 feet curb-to-curb, which is I think quite, it's not maybe exact with what's there, but it's close.
Alright, thank you.
I have one question about, on page 67 of the staff report, it talked about proposed right-of-way vacation, what is that?
I believe that relates to the fig street segment?
So where would you move it, like two feet or something?
I don't think that move is substantial, but it is necessary to accommodate pedestrian access. Previous iterations of the plan showed a fairly large retaining wall along that whole eastern section of the project site. By providing some vacation, then there's a way to reduce that retaining wall and have more of a stepped effect of benching, and also to accommodate access to ramp system down.
Reason I ask this, I know that we moved the right-of-way on the project of where the old police headquarters was, and in driving by it, it really is close to the street, and I just don't wanna continue to make another mistake like that.
Yeah, the, I don't think there's a cross-section of what was provided, but the site plan and your packet will show the location and setback of the buildings to the ultimate right-of-way point, and as configured, the units are situated above, so there is some defensive space, which might be lacking in the A-way project, although the streets are at maybe below this, the streets catering. So there won't be that effect, and there shouldn't be adequate benching with retaining walls that may be planned with the folder, but the, so the buildings are pushed back from the actual sidewalk or the travel.
Thank you, did you have one?
Mike, thank you by the way for the presentation, a quick question, as it relates, I suppose, loosely to circulation, are there any ADT projections, weekday weekend?
Yes, so that's gonna be part of the CEQA process. We don't have that information for discussion this evening, but certainly that would be a topic of deep conversation as this project advances. It's anticipated that the draft EIR should probably be finalized and ready for public review in the next weeks. Sure, I'm looking at the applicant. And during which time, there will be a public review period, certainly the commission would be a recipient of a copy of that public draft, and there would be a technical study of the traffic and its potential impacts, and how we use or mitigate those impacts.
Sorry to interrupt. Are there any other questions of staff? Okay, I'm gonna open up.
Okay, I apologize, whoops, I apologize for coming in late here. You know, in reviewing this whole thing, I noticed that this is really the end of the grand downtown area. And right now, there doesn't seem to be much retail or what we could be having up at that end of it coming forward, and maybe I just didn't read the report correctly. And then I understand from looking at what you have going on up there, the tower is not accessible, and it's not going to be used for anything other than to be a monument to the top of the hill there, I guess, or the bottom of the hill, kind of in regards to that. And so my question is then lastly, is when I saw something earlier on, I believe it also said that there was gonna be more traffic calming action happening between the two sides of Valley Parkway there, I thought it was gonna be reduced down to one lane, with wider walkways going through that, and more retail on the building 24 side of that, and maybe I just didn't see that when I read the report, I saw it online, and I went through it last Thursday, so I perhaps forgot something, but if you could kind of fill in on that.
Yeah, so the project applicant will actually be walking through their development proposal, we do have a lot of photo simulations that kind of show how this base might work, but the project's middle, as it's presented on this particular site plan, has 12,000 square feet of commercial, kind of anchoring both sides of Valley, showing the red and the purple. So that would be the extent of the proposal for commercial uses, but like I said, I think the applicant will be able to walk through and talk about access to the tower, or its relationship to the public, the streetscape, and various bench points with simulations.
And then one other question I had, and it may be too soon for this, but where those streets all intersect Valley Parkway and Grand, can that be converted into some type of roundabout or something of that nature, because then that would actually start to work going further down into the downtown area, and eliminate that signal, and give you that calming effect maybe, kind of indicating we are now reaching into this destination, which is downtown?
Those are good design comments, and like I mentioned earlier previously during the presentation, that staff will receive those and forward these to the commission. There are some planning-related issues, and then there's some geometric, technical roadway operation issues, and those would have to be flushed out. At one point, there was consideration about different access points for ingress egress on the southern portion of the site, and because of the cresting of Grand in certain locations, it makes certain design treatments infeasible. But that's not the point of tonight's discussion, to say yes or no to certain things, it's to receive all these comments and forward into the applicant, so I certainly wouldn't inhibit any of those forward-thinking ideas, so that's the first thing that I would add, so thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public part of the meeting and receive comments, and then after the public speaks, I'm gonna close the public, and then we're gonna bring the applicant up, and then we'll, you can have whatever time you want. I have two speaker slips here, and I'd ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and speak, state your name for the record when you come to the podium, please, Doug Hicks?
Good evening Council, my name is Doug Hicks, and I'm here tonight expressing concerns about this project on behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. We're concerned about the project's compliance with the California Environmental We're concerned about the project's compliance with the California Environmental Law Act. The carpenters are concerned about the presence of potential hazardous substances on the project site, including asbestos and lead-based paint that may affect workers on the site and the residents nearby. Because of these concerns, the carpenters request that the city implement mitigation measures to ensure that these hazards are issued...these hazards' issues are remedied prior to the beginning of construction activities. The carpenters also incorporate, by reference, all comments raising issues regarding the environmental impact report submitted prior to the certification of the EIR for the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I really appreciate having this opportunity for early design review on Palomar Heights project, where the planning commissioners and the public are requested to provide comments related to project design issues. I expected...I expected it was likely that there would be other speakers besides me here who are so glad that this opportunity presents itself. And I understand it's like a voluntary thing, so I very much appreciate the applicant's, you know, interest in this step, taking this step. A lot of us consider it unfortunate that this same step has not been undertaken on other high-priority projects and prominent locations, you know? So I just think it underscores the value of having this step taken. In an era where modern, new standards are being applied, new processes and expediency, you know, through project streamlining, you know, this is a refreshing change. So I think it has value, and I expect good things to happen because of it. Anyway, my first observation is on the site's eastern parcel, which is the former hospital. It's important to note that it has significant topographical features, elevation changes. And it's a hilltop feature surrounded by mostly flat terrain. It's a unique and highly visible focal point that I think designers haven't fully taken into consideration as both an opportunity and a constraint. It's not an easy site to develop and design for, so I can appreciate, you know, how challenging it is. But I think that there's opportunities to provide more innovative site planning to develop a project plan that conforms to contours and topographic features by using, you know, benches, you know, different levels, instead of, you know, so much grading that requires extensive retaining walls that are up to 15 feet high in some places. The Palomar Heights plan was analyzed by two of our local architects who prepared valuable written acotments, which I agree with. Architects Ken Erickson and Greg Danskin noted that this prominent site in our historical and downtown area was designed in a way that it seems that this project was designed, you know, for a flat site. So what results is there's, in some cases, you know, indications that it's sort of a forced fit. And so I think that comments that you've been presenting, too, the written comments by these architects are going to be important to be considered by the applicant and their It doesn't seem to provide the physical connection to surrounding neighborhood or create the kind of enjoyable pedestrian experience to the extent that was foreseen or expressed in the vision that was developed when the downtown specific plan was approved. And anyway, one of the other comments I'd like to make was, I'd like to see an alternate plan with more usable onsite open space for landscape material and usable open space areas to enjoy, for children to play, and to have more areas for people to view from inside their units, and for places for people to relax. I don't see a clock, so...
That's all right, go ahead.
It was noted along Fig Street, the cross-section CC indicates the terrace with retaining walls are going to be up to 15 feet in height with slope banks. The ground floor is 20 feet above the adjacent sidewalk, and this really does not provide a pedestrian-friendly type of walkable streets that, you know, we're trying to achieve. So those are my comments, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are the only two speaker slips I have. Does anybody else? Go ahead.
To the chair, I just want to clarify, because I'm a spokeer, about the right-of-way vacation acquisitions. And the attendant map sheet six and five, it shows the areas of acquisition and vacation. Most of the right-of-ways vacation is occurring, I believe, for using access on sheet five. The acquisitions are occurring on Valley Boulevard and the smalls that are on Fig, so...
So...
It's also occurring in the local market for acquisition.
Thank you. And just to clarify also, the written communication that we received, that will be included in for comments that will be forwarded to staff, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Okay, those are the only two speaker slips I have. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak about this? Seeing none, close the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up.
Good evening, Chairman Span and planning commissioners. I'm Gil Meltner with Integral Communities. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss our new exciting project, Palomar Heights, at the former hospital site. Integral Communities is a diverse real estate development company that specializes in mixed-use and residential projects. And you'll know us from our gateway project called West Grand, the old police station that's currently under construction. In the fall of 2017, we started studying the site and performing our due diligence. And as you can imagine, there was much to be studied, such as environmental conditions, issues, the age of the buildings. Question was, could the buildings be salvaged or repurposed, or did even make sense what utilities and capacities were available? What was the traffic going to look like? What were the stakeholders thinking, including the Downtown Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce? What did the downtown specific plan say? What thoughts did staff have? What thoughts did the policymakers have? And also, a big item is, what is the market saying? This is just a short list, but as you can see here, there's much to be considered when planning a new project this size and scope that has nine buildings built over 50 years, including a Cogen plant, underground storage tanks, asbestos, and lead paint. So first, we looked at what are the opportunities and also what are the constraints? Let's first look at the opportunities. One is we saw that it's proximity to the historic downtown of Grand Avenue. Also, with the revitalization that's going on downtown, we could further that. There's existing infrastructure, such as sewer water, street networks. There's an adopted downtown specific plan that employs creativity and vitality. Now I'd like to look at the constraints. Well, the site is split. There's by Valley Boulevard, there's one acre on one side, 12.8 acres on the other. The edges are bound by surrounding streets that kind of pin us down, and they're all at different elevations. Valley's moving up and down, and Grand goes up and comes back down. Fig is at a different elevation. So on all sides of us, we're facing different elevations. One is the irregular shape and the variety of the topography. From the highest point on Grand to the lowest point at the entry on Valley, it's 47-foot grade difference. Most people don't see that, because they just see the building. Also, there's market and construction costs versus higher density constraints. There's a requirement in the specific plan for ground floor commercial. Also, we want to look at what are the influences? Well, to the west, the historic downtown is planned to be more urbanized. On either side of us, to the north and south, are existing senior housing care facilities and offices. And then to the east, there are, it's a kind of a mixed bag. It's one and two-story uses, such as office, commercial, and residential. With these influences, an interesting thing came, really was discovered for us, is that the western part of the site feels more urban as it interfaces the downtown and Grand Avenue, and the eastern part of the site feels less urban and not as vertical, with the lower-rise mixed-use type of uses that are there. Secondly, with the hospital site, it's not the center or the epicenter of the historic downtown, but it's actually on the eastern edge, very end of it. When you look at the downtown specific one, the plant center, the center converges on Center City Drive to Broadway to Grand. So through this process, we establish our planning goals. One is we felt that there needed to be a diverse type of housing to add residents and create vibrancy for the downtown area. Also, bringing for-sale housing into the project was a foundational component. Also, the design of a marquee architectural element at Grand and Valley was very important, also to encourage public art at certain corners and also on the eastern entrance. We can talk about that a little bit later. One is to create interest with the building articulation, with the material changes and also the landscaped areas. One is we wanted to reimagine what Valley Boulevard looks like, wanted to create a place that is welcoming and also pedestrian-friendly. We wanted to add limited commercial at key corners, and that's where you see the two positions of the commercial, to add to the community but not actually take away from the local businesses. One is we were blending this kind of urban interface to the west to this less urban to the east. And lastly, is to have a balanced parking plan that encourages bike, pedestrian, and also public transportation. I'd like to turn the rest of the presentation over to Mia Hamler.
Good evening, chair commissioners. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're really excited to work together to present this opportunity to the city of Escondido and to form a wonderful project. So thank you for your time and consideration and your dedication to the planning efforts in this great city. As previously mentioned, we studied the site carefully and consulted with design professionals. We took feedback from various stakeholders to establish our initial design. This right here is what you see from our submittal in December. That application planned for 440 dwelling units, 5,000 square feet of commercial, and had roughly a 50/50 split of for-sale and for-rent product within the residential units. Following that initial application, we worked with staff and the policymakers to achieve a balance of product with a higher unit count. We stepped to 465 and finally landed at 510 units. Within that revised design, and to help achieve the higher unit count, we designed a plan that utilized walls. Specifically, along Valley Boulevard, the walls were utilized to create a private versus public walkway separating the front doors from the public sidewalk. The initial design of Valley Boulevard sparked a lot of feedback. Staff and stakeholders requested we make it more pedestrian-friendly while maintaining the iconic corner and that we minimize the walls. In response to these comments, as well as the design principles in the downtown specific plan, we brought the E building lower. You can see the family apartment building is shaped like an E for Escondido. We got rid of nearly all the walls, leaving only the walls at the main entry off of Hickory. We varied the architecture, added a variety of materials, reoriented front doors, added articulation, and roof plate differentiation. So as you can see here, you now have the ability to take access to your home directly from the private-public sidewalk. We've recessed doorways, tucked them back into porticoes. There's a variety of entry, and there's a lot more movement in the building than we had in our June submittal. Early on, the opportunity to eliminate an underutilized westbound Grand connection was an idea that was identified, so we looked to shrink Valley Boulevard, making this area more pedestrian-friendly. There's less than 100 trips that come westbound on Valley Boulevard. Lane configurations, parking, mobility elements, bike lanes are all opportunities that we would like to seek design input on. Based on the traffic volume, staff has agreed that a 53-foot curb-to-curb dimension will suffice to allow for two travel lanes to the northeast meeting Valley Parkway. In addition, we have narrowed the corners, providing a shorter span for ease of pedestrian crossing, and it creates a nice hub of the two retail points or commercial points that we have on either one of these corners. The main entrance on Hickory is a fixed point. It exists today and is signalized. The road will climb, making it a dynamic point of entry. The dual-wall system in this location will allow for a planting separation, monumentation signage, it will be well-lit, and upon arrival, you will be greeted by the primary recreation center with a community building, pool, and spa. The current proposal, which is included in your package and as Mike discussed in detail, includes a strong diversity of housing type. Diversity in the housing market downtown is very important for vibrancy and occupancy. And so we've broken it down to 90 age-targeted apartments, 258 family apartments, 90 for-sale villas, and 72 for-sale row townhomes, totaling the 510 dwelling units. This creates over 539,000 square feet of livable space, which is a 45% increase from the square footage that you see on the site today. The rental product will include the age-targeted units, which will range in size from 600 to 800 square feet, and the family apartments, which will range in size from 650 to 1,600 square feet. With units in the studio size range and the target audience, the parking requirements for some of those, guest parking has been requested to be reduced. There are two for-sale product types, the villas and the row townhomes. These range in size from 1,100 to 1,875 square feet. They are specifically planned to have little overlap and to reach a different buyer profile. Each of the for-sale homes will have an attached two-car garage, and that will have direct access into their homes, and these homes meet the requirement for resident and guest parking. In planning a community of this nature, we look toward the needs of today, but also what may come in the future. As such, we are trying to balance parking, mobility, transit, and pedestrian connectivity. Along Valley Boulevard, there is a transit stop for NCTD, as well as a turnout area that can be used as a pickup location for Uber and Lyft, and it was suggested today even maybe a Zipcar station. We've added points of pedestrian connectivity on all sides of the site, including a ped ramp to Fig. The downtown specific plan calls for the ground floor of all the buildings to be commercial or office-based. We are seeking a deviation from this requirement, but are planning for 12,000 square feet of commercial within two buildings at the corner of Valley Boulevard and Grand. Amenities within the community include a community building, a pool, a spa, a dog park, and an internal electric bike share, a barbecue and play area, a recreation deck, and what we call a secret garden behind the retail corner on Grand, right behind this Stella's Red Room. Within our commercial proposal, our primary building, or icon building, is planned to rise 75 feet in height. To answer your question, Commissioner Wyler, the deviation to the 90 feet does not have any living or occupiable space beyond the 75 feet. It's just a superstructure to create additional massing. Maximizing views to the west, the fourth floor will provide an outdoor dining or bar And finally, we plan for the community to be sustainable, using green build methods, including solar, the multimodal mobility hub, EV charging stations, electric bike share, construction waste reduction, and drought-tolerant landscape. construction waste reduction, and drought-tolerant landscape. So to date, we've tried to reach the mark with our marquee design elements, including the 90-foot cornerstone feature at Grand, the rooftop bar/restaurant to capture the views of the city, the transportation hub, the green build methods, the pedestrian connectivity in urban scale, the recreation, and the variety of housing types. And we would be seeking additional opportunities for conversation on things like public art, commercial uses, the public spaces. There's a right-of-way area adjacent to the age-targeted building off of Valley Parkway that can be captured in an area for public art or some other landscape opportunity that would be a great discussion, and of course, recreational uses. So thank you so much for your time, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Excuse me, I've got a couple of questions. On the commercial component, how did you come to 12,000 square feet? Was it just based on, you know, that particular corner going four stories up with the commercial? Or was there some other methodology that you used to get to 12,000?
I think it was probably some of both. What we looked at was a reasonable mix of things that we thought could be utilized as well as the height. So our current plan, this section represents the icon building, which falls on the eastern portion of the site. The idea is that the ground floor space, and I can quote you the square footage is, but the ground floor space would be probably leasing and a cafe. And then as you go up, you would have an opportunity for a gym that would primarily service the residents of the apartment building in the community. And then beyond that, you would have the restaurant and bar. There also could be an opportunity for collaborative workspace within that square footage. That building totals roughly 10,000 square feet, and then the space across the street is roughly 2,000 or 2,500 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of comments, and I don't know that really you need to address them. Actually, I do have one. I'm very pleased to see the for-sale aspect in this project. Do you have any plans of coming back now and changing that, or are these going to be for-sale units?
Our plan is that these are for-sale units.
Just, I'm concerned about future generations that start out renting, and 20 years later they're still renting, and they have not built up any wealth in real estate. And every project that we've pushed through recently has not had the for-sale component, so I'm glad to see that. I have to tell you that your attempt to mask the corner with that iconic tower, I think you ought to be going the other direction because we have got so much mass in this development that really, for all practical purposes, is not what downtown was meant to have, these big massive things. I would be all in favor of eliminating that tower completely. I don't like it. It doesn't really have any significance. This corner historically has had the first fire station in Escondido, it had the first city hall. One was the square adobe building, which there's no way to integrate square adobe structure into this project. It had the round city hall, which was really iconic, and then it had the hospital. I would like to see some feature there that reflected the past, including the fire department, the original city hall, and the hospital. And you can go over to the Pioneer Room and look up pictures of these things. I would, I just don't like that tower. What I saw at first, it looks like it's hanging there. It's missing one corner of the structure, it's not drawn into the picture. It looks like an afterthought that was put in there to try to do something. The project itself looks good. I think this takes it down. That's my thought on that. Any other comments?
Could you please go back to the first slides of your presentation where you had the four different projects?
The four different product types?
No. The very beginning of your presentation. There. When I see the Milpitas one, there's a whole lot of commercial down there, and it's a very similar area and corner section that we have going on here. And here, for some reason, we can't seem to squeeze any more in up there. And that tower, by the way, I agree with you, is just not making me feel too warm and fuzzy about it, but I do just have concerns in regards to that, especially on the other side. I mean, you're trying to make a walk of a promenade, and all of a sudden, we're there. And then the lack of density. I mean, the lack of density is just something else. It's just, there should be more density on that project. You can get more density in there, and I'm a density person. I want to see that happening. So those are my first comments, but I just see that Milpitas thing, and it's like, okay, now we're stuck over here with you telling me that that's not reasonable at all. Well, you have examples of success with it. So that's it for now.
Couple of questions. I really like the roof plain differentiation that you do. Does that necessarily, or how does that jive with your solar objectives? Is it casting shadows, or is, does solar work? What is the solar component, I guess?
So we'll have to keep up with the building code, the current building code at the time, which should be next year's building code, and right now, I think we're calling for about two and...
Majority of the roof is flat. So it's just the front that has those sheds. Well, majority of the roof is flat.
Okay, okay. And then are you subject to the requirements from Sacramento that, like you know this, I'm sure by heart, for new home construction after January 1st, or if the plan was based on when they were submitted, have a solar component requirement?
Correct.
We're subject to that.
You are subject to that, great. But this is awfully specific. What's a glass package? Is it low-eed glass, or what kind of glazing?
We haven't expected that yet, but it will be the requirement.
Okay, gotcha. I wonder if you could discuss a little bit more. I've got a project going on right now that involves wetlands, so I was pretty curious to learn, I was curious to learn more about modular wetlands.
Yes.
Can you talk to that?
I might let our engineer come and speak to them a little bit.
And while he's coming up, then I can wrap mine up. Is the architectural feature that the tower, the box, is it lighted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the champagne glass, boy, that's a loose reference, but it looks like a champagne glass on the corner at Grand there. Is that conceptual, or is that actually gonna, is that going in?
It's conceptual. It's meant to be kind of sculptural and offer shade.
There it is.
Yeah. It's a little bit of an art convo homage to some of the dome-like structures that you see around the city hall.
And somehow I liken it to a champagne glass. Sorry for that. I didn't mean to oversimplify that.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Modular wetland units, more of a modern-day ability to take care of the stormwater quality permit rather than have a big basin dug underground on a site like this. It's good for urban settings, collects the stormwater, cleans it through plant material, biofiltration through an enclosed casing, if you will, and then puts it, clean water back in the storm drain. So just the way that I clean the water.
So is it akin to sort of a, I didn't see elevations, but I planted, you know, that was called out. So is it, it is elevated, or is it at that finish?
No, sir. It's in line with the inlet, the storm drain inlet, so it will be below ground and has a little cap to it so you can access it, pull up a storm drain lid essentially, and maintain it and put it back and...
I was thinking more of the brow or the swale component, though. I thought I saw something in the renderings that looked like an elevated swale.
No.
All right, maybe that was on the internet. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. It's all subsurface, so you really don't see anything. It would look like a storm drain inlet to the naked eye until you opened up the vault and saw what goes inside.
And that's where the biofiltration magic happens, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for...
This is a nice design. I can see how you're trying to bring that, create that vibrancy into the downtown area. It's kind of hard because it is a little bit removed from the center of Grand and what we're trying to bring to downtown. The mixed usage was something that I've always wanted to see, and I'm glad for that. I am struggling also with some of the other commissioners with the tower. Not so much the tower maybe itself, but the box around it. It, I don't know, I kind of guess I get it with how it's connected to the rest, but as I look at across the street where Stellus is at, I don't see any connection for that. The buildings itself, colors, everything, it seems to be working well together. When I was looking at the plan, what seemed to me that it was kind of disjointed, like it wasn't connected. I don't know what you can do for that, but I did want to mention that. And the for-sale, that's great. That is something that we've been hearing from the community, at least in some of the recent projects, that it's all rental and there's no for-sale. I think that is something that's very important and wonderful that you're, that you're working on. So those are just some of the main comments that I wanted to make, and thank you for taking this humongous project. And I'm sure and I expect that this will be something iconic as the years come forward here in Escondido, so thank you.
Just a couple of things I'd like to echo Vice Chair Romo's idea of, I think this is an ideal spot to start with traffic circles for calming traffic and making it easier for people to get around rather than intersections and traffic lights. And a quick question, I thought I remember reading somewhere that some of the rental units were being built condo specs. Is that for maybe later conversions so there's more purchase than the 50/50?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Did you have questions? And if you've got questions, I'll hold off.
Just really quick. I tend to agree with the tower aspect of my fellow commissioners, and it does seem a bit out of place. The outdoor dining area, I like that a lot. It gives you a good view of the city, and I think that's, I think that's a great, a great thing to have, but are we going to run into a noise problem with, with people living right there and having dining outside? We've had this situation not too long ago, even with music playing, but it's just something to think about. I like the elevated dining area, but it's awfully close to the, to a residential area, and that could be a problem. And I also agree with, we can work around that, and I don't know if that's possible, but that is a really good way to go to keep it going.
So I know that we had questions for the applicant. I guess, because this is kind of a different sort of way that we're doing this, are we going to have discussion amongst ourselves on the design aspects of this?
I think...
Suggestions?
We aren't just making suggestions that are going to be taken back to staff. So we, I mean, you can, we can discuss whatever we want, but everybody has their own ideas, and I think we just want to reiterate as many as possible.
Do you mind if I chime in here a little bit? Because I, we're trying to hopefully have a dialogue, if that's okay, Chairman. One is the tower element. I think, you know, that came out of many conversations because of the site being significant, you know, historically, the cloud towers, probably won't be tall. You know, it's a reference point in the city. People see that. One of the things is that we had heard there needs to be a focal point, and, you know, we centered that on Grand. If you notice, it's, we pulled it forward on Grand, so if you're looking at Grand, you're going to be able to see this thing lit at night. You know, there's also the thing of the Christmas tree. And, you know, one of the things is having this lit at night potentially during the holiday seasons, is there some, you know, design or something. Now, I think, you know, it's, it's always a good discussion. I mean, I think the idea was that the commercial elements are projecting out away from the residents, you know, Commissioner Cohen, you know, and so the idea is that you're, you're not, you know, going to be hearing banging noises and music, and so it's projecting this way as you see it. But also, I mean, I think we're open to the ideas if there's something, a different design of it, but we always felt like there's always, should be something that you could point to and see. And also, because this is an important project, is that we, you know, personally, we would like to have kind of like this marquee architectural element. So, you know, if there's more discussion on that, we're open to listen.
Just a quick comment as far as the sound goes. The sound that we're talking about, I don't think is generated from diners. It's generated from music and people performing. I think that it should be noted that there should not be any live music up there because that will be a problem downtown. And not necessarily with your tenants, who can expect it, but everybody else, if there's loud music up there like this other particular problem we had, I don't want to have to go through that again. As far as having a focal point, I agree. I think that looks like you were in a big hurry to put up a focal point, and so we got out the erector set and started putting it together. I would rather see nothing up there than that unless there's something, just the corner itself is a focal point. I mean, people that are driving along on Grand that look up to see that tower, that's just enough distraction to take their eyes off the road. I think that the fact that that corner looks clean, it looks new, we don't need to have that big thing up there. The actual glass inside there, I don't have so much of a problem with, but that metal structure around the outside that looks to me like a waste of steel, I don't think needs to be there. That's my thoughts.
I really liked the architecture that was done. I think you guys did a really good job on creating a street scene that although it's cohesive, it looks like it could have been built over time. There's a lot of ins and outs, there's a lot of things happening, so I really do like that. Probably my biggest concern is that particular corner. I think what we're trying to accomplish with this end of Grand is to bring people up to this part of the city. I don't feel that there's enough open plaza area there for people to congregate. I, this is just my personal opinion, I think there needs to be a little bit more right on that corner. If you look at the corner on the, for the age-restricted or the senior housing at Valley, at Valley Parkway, that's a great focal. I mean, there's a lot of area there to gather, but I don't think anybody's going to go there other than the residents. I think it's great for residents on that side. It's a great place for them to go, to walk around. But I think for the end of Grand, this is the focal point that you've arrived at the end of Grand. So I think a little more thought needs to be given just to that corner area. Now, whether or not that open area extends underneath the building, that's a possibility, but just something that gets more people to come to that part of the site. So that's the one comment that I have there. You know, I do have concerns with the tower element, you know. I wouldn't say get rid of it, but, you know, I can, I can see where that may be just kind of an add-on, maybe a little more thought on that. My other comment is internally, if a little more thought can be given to the pedestrian access between the far eastern, as you want to bring people towards Grand. Because what we don't have is an internal, a clear internal corridor that brings the residents from within and brings them right straight to Grand so that they continue that experience all the way, all the way down. The street system seems to work, but it's just, there's no connectivity. So those are kind of my comments from that perspective. I'm glad you've got a dog park there. A lot of people have pets. I think it's a great amenity. There's only the one seemingly active park other than, than the pool area. It might not be enough if we've got... It might not be enough if we've got, you know, 200 and something family units. So, there is a concern about that. Overall, I really like our architecture. I think it's, I think it's very interesting and I think it'll fit well there. But those are some of my site design comments. And if there's any way to reduce some of the retaining walls, that would be terrific. I understand it's a tough site and you're basically on an old and trying to make this work and create access all the way through this. It's a tough site. But overall, I think you've done a really good job. But those are my comments.
I have one other question too. What exactly is Stella's? What is Stella's?
Oh, it's just plain to be like your cafe area and basement.
Oh, I also have one question for staff. I know that the one, one side was, had a different, we used to say 70 units, the other was 100, so we transferred the density to the senior housing. Did we use up all of the density? I know that what was left over was going to go into the pool. Are we using what was going to go into the pool for the senior side?
This project is kind of self-contained with this transfer. In fact, there'll be a surplus that will be added to the pool.
Okay. And I personally feel like it's plenty dense for downtown. I don't want to see anything. I think we need to come online with what we've already approved before we start pumping in any, any higher than what we've got here. I'm very pleased with the density on this.
The challenge I have with the density is that this is for 1,500 units. What was the original density for this? Now, what's the total density for the site?
Also, a campus, which is low over 10 acres, allows up to 100 units and then the senior housing site with 75, 80 units per acre. So, at 13 acres, I mean, approximately, I think over 12, 13, 14 units.
Right. So, it's, it's not really running at its capacity at this point.
That would be a gross density in tract.
Right. But it's not even half. I agree with Stan or Commissioner Meyer, excuse me, that that is probably what that really needs is that spot up there. And my question was, is there was only 100 cars going south on Valley Parkway at this time from your traffic studies? Is that correct? What's your ones going, what's your count going north?
Over 9,000.
A day? Oh, wow. Is it, is it 9,000 right there?
Well, generally, right now, as the DIR, correct me if I'm wrong, the traffics is basically, the hospital's occupied above 30%. It's generating traffic today. So, the, the new, once that goes away and the project's built, the new traffic, it's going to be somewhere, I'm just going to use recall park numbers here, somewhere between probably 17 to 1,900 extra cars per day. But when the hospital is operating at full capacity, it's in excess of what it will be used.
Right. No, I was just.
But.
I was hoping to narrow that street more, but I can't. There's so much traffic going down.
Yeah, there's enough traffic going in that we couldn't.
Narrow it anymore.
Yeah, down, declassify it in a way that it's not the capacity. There is two lanes going northbound and also just one.
Right.
So, we're eliminating one lane that's, like I said, only worth 1,100 cars.
Right. No, I was just hoping to.
Yeah. And that's why, the whole idea was, is that you see on the corner, we tried to neck that down, if you noticed that. And also, there's some realignment of the road because it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Owen, it's a little disjointed as you go through the intersection. So, we're actually trying to smooth out the, you know, the drive aisles that we're going through so it's safer. And also, like you said, trying to neck that down. That necking will actually slow people down when they come across there. It's just a natural response when you see, you know, the road isn't as wide. So, that's kind of what we've done. Also, we've looked at potentially is that sidewalk that goes across. I mean, do we do it in a different pattern or something? Because, you know, whenever you see something of a different color, you automatically slow down. So, is it, you know, is it a concrete, you know, sidewalk or something? So.
Owen, is there, we've got five-foot bicycle lanes, it looks like, on both sides of a new reconfigured Boundless Boulevard. I mean, is this a going to be, do you think, a heavily-used bicycle pathway? And, you know, kind of playing off Commissioner Romo, kind of narrow this, create the wider sidewalks, get things, people to walk from there. And I don't want to just arbitrarily, I would not prefer that we just arbitrarily put bicycle lanes in on a segment that nobody bicycles.
Well, not only that, half of that bicycle lane will be going in the wrong direction if we can just force them to half.
Yeah, the proposal is to have the bike lane facility only on the east side, so it would be consistent with the class two facility direction, path of travel. The consideration of the bike lane facility itself, the bike wait master plan as of today hasn't been updated in over a decade and there is a resurgent need to evaluate the active transportation goals of the city in relation to the climate action plan effort, which will seek to reduce vehicles' travel by shifting to different modes. This particular segment in Grand kind of serves as the gateway to the east. And so, this does provide an opportunity to incrementally add to a future network. The nearest intersection from this is Hickory to the north will connect to the Escondido Creek Trail, which is, the city's been in pursuit of an $8 million grant and has obtained a $1.5 million grant, but ultimately, the vision is to create a useful functional trail with multiple north-south connection points to it. So, if Hickory is indeed in the future a connection point, well, then you'll have to provide facilities to get there. So, with this project moving through, it seemed to be at least a preliminary idea to see what could be accomplished, look at. Further from a CECL perspective, and we're not talking too much about CECL tonight, but there is a need to look at all modes of transportation and how people are accessing properties. Certainly, one of the project goals that was provided in the applicant's presentation was to kind of look at, you know, completing streets and adding chartering stations, bike sharing programs. All those things that kind of relate to a more universal package of multi-global communication. The project's still in design review and it's uncertain if the project that ultimately is forward to the planning commission will have that facility there. So, it's still a work in progress.
One other comment I meant to, when I was, my concerns about the site, down in the parking area, if there could be some consideration given for additional, for any bicycle parking so that we can promote this. I know it's a little contrary to taking bicycle lanes away from that particular segment that I was looking at, but, and I think we do need to provide that option. So, if you could look at that and also if there's the ability to have some motorcycle or scooter-type parking as well.
Wanted to weigh in just one more time on the, from the minority standpoint, I guess, on the architectural feature that's been, I guess, the bone of contention. And frankly, I like the thing. I'm just going to tell you, I know, I know I'm at the short end of this, but I do like it. Even if you do or don't like the design, if that thing's lighted, gosh, golly, I think that will be an iconic feature there at the end. You know, my appearance says maximalist, but that says minimalist and I like that. It's clean, it's modern. It's just one man's opinion, but don't, don't consider the views unanimous on that. I actually like the thing, so that's just me. Thank you.
There's a apartment complex in Edo, I think it is. They got a clock tower. And it's, it's fairly new, they have retail on the bottom. I love the clock tower feature and this reminds me of that. I'm not against what you have here. I don't necessarily like the bars, the tubes. I like the tower aspect and the reason I like the tower aspect is I really like the tower aspect of the facility on Escondido. That just happens to have a clock, it's something, yeah, a clock, but something up there in that area. Because I'll be honest, the whole corner of the building there is great. I love the architecture, I love the depth, the protruding parts and everything. That will add to it, it just needs to be something a little bit more.
I have, I have no problem with the inner part of that, but the outside is where I have a problem. I think truly less is more of this. You're going to have a better look just as much while without that and you're going to save a lot of money too by not putting that structure around it. You can still put the Christmas tree on top of that, which I would expect.
You could make it like a fire station hose tower.
I thought about that.
Anyways, if you made those doors out front, you could actually make those some kind of La Quintina or some kind of door like that. That would actually, that must give you that open portico feeling going on right there as well and give you a little bit bigger patio space.
Have we exhausted our comments? I don't think we need any formal motion on this. All of this information is going to be forwarded to the, to staff and they're going to integrate it into the next plan. Oral communication, does anybody in the audience wish to speak about anything? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any comments? Commissioner comments? And our next meeting is?
We have two hearing hours for November 22nd.
For 22nd, okay.
Oh, sorry, October 22nd.
In two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.